The, uh, March twenty seventh, twenty three, three thirty P. M., the, uh, Ware County Board of Commissioners work session. And, uh, I might ask Danny if he would lead us in prayer before we start.
Dearly, Father, we thank you so much for the day. We thank you, Father, for the rain you sent our way. And we pray, Father, that you be with these Board of Commissioners as they consider the business of the county. Have them always, Father, to keep our citizens forefront in their thoughts and in the actions that they take. Father, we pray that you light your path so that we may follow. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We got a couple of guest speakers today. Uh, Mr. Carl, uh, Roll Call, he has a better good Roll Call, I reckon, I forgot about that. Thank you. Uh, Roll Call, Mr. Burson.
President.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Barnard.
Present.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Now, we got a guest speaker is Mr. Carlos Smith. Would you come up and give us a seat on the election board?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, um, you know, I was, I was at the last work session and Commissioner Burson asked me if I had some comments. I'm too scared to get up again, so I said, well, I'll come back this evening.
It's no better than this, you know what I mean?
Uh, but actually, um, you know, I talked to one of my board members that, uh, you know, that was at the, um, the voter registration conference in Jekyll, um, about eight weeks ago, six weeks ago, whatever. And, um, he said that, um, I need to come here and give y'all an update about what's happening in, in the elections in Ware County and around the state. So this is gonna be real quick and easy because the legislature is still in. So as you know, while the legislature is in, in session, you never know what's gonna happen. So I'm not even wanna try to guess on what's gonna happen in the new, uh, election legislation. But I do wanna let people know that this is kinda like what we call an off year. Um, the city election is coming up, so we preparing for the city election in, uh, November. But, uh, but most importantly, I wanna let people know that we're still working. A lot of people think that since we don't have an election right now, we, we, we don't work. Uh, but we do because, um, this is the time we do all the background stuff to make sure that next year runs smooth. Um, you know, currently we, we doing what we call street maintenance. Actually, we are looking at every, every street, every road in Ware County, making sure that the voters are in their correct, um, districts, combos, precincts, um, you know, and because sometimes in the city of Ware Cross, I know Commissioner Burson knows this is as good as anybody. You know, we, we, you know, when they annex, sometimes they don't, they don't notify us, you know, until later. And so you may have a, a street here and come up and cut down and cut this, you got a house in the county, a house in the city, a house in the county. You got neighbors on both sides living in the county and one in the middle in the city. And so sometimes when you add, um, you know, voters to a row, everybody may be in the city and then, or everybody may be in the county, vice versa. And so a lot of that goes on, just, it's still a basic human error when you're looking at as many roads as we have in Ware County. And so that's what we're doing now. We, we, we're taking a real strong, long look, alphabet by alphabet, street by street. Um, and to make sure that we, um, have everybody ready for the twenty, um, twenty four elections coming up. So that's the most important thing. The, the state has now started a new voter registration, um, portal, uh, uh, what we use for our system. So, um, we in the process of learning that system. It's gonna be a great asset to the voters and, and mainly to the staff because it's user friendly. Uh, but the good part about with the voters is that it's, it's almost like near real, real time updates on voter information. So if we, if we change something, if you come in and change your address, within, within a couple of hours, if you go online to your voter page, which is a new thing that, uh, the state started a few years ago, it will show your address change. Uh, when you vote, if you vote early, um, you go in and vote, um, by the end of the day, you will, it will show that you voted on that day and whatever time. That your vote, uh, that you came in and, and, um, did your application to vote. Um, if you request absentee ballot, it will show that, you know, your absentee ballot was requested. It will show you what date it was sent out, so you can be expected to receive it. And when you turn it back in, it will show that it's been received. And as, uh, on the election night, when the, when the absentee ballots are counted, it will show that it counted. So that's one of the good things. Everything's starting to like blend, work, work well together. You know, our registration and the M. V. P. page and everything across the board will be coming in, in the play. So, so we looking forward to doing that and, uh, and, but most important thing, I know in this, in these days and times of conspiracy theories and people, you know, um, come up with these different ideas, especially when something they don't understand when it comes to voting and the voting equipment. I always encourage and invite voters to come up to the office, um, and, and if they wanna see how it works. Before every election, we do what we call L. and A. testing. We test the equipment, we test all of the ballots, make sure they're working. Um, even now, if somebody comes in and wanna see how we actually go through the process, we, we'd be willing to sit down with them and show them. The only thing I ask is that you leave conspiracy theories at the door, theories at the door. Come in with a, with a fresh mind and give us an opportunity to show you. Because we cannot chase rabbits all, you know, all down rabbit holes and, and try to chase all of the conspiracies. But what I can do is share with you the way that it works, okay? And I have total confidence that with all the changes that's, that's been made, uh, it's very technical now, but we have very, very secure elections. Um, our number one, um, role with the staff, poll workers, um, board members is that every legal vote that's cast is counted. That's one of my, that is pretty much our main goal. And I wanna say every legal vote that's cast is counted. And I, and I, and I have ultimate confidence in that, but, you know, this happens in Ware County and, and I'm pretty sure it happens around the state because we're all under the same laws, under the same requirements as everyone else is around the state. So I do wanna give you an update about what we're doing. Um, oh, and also one of the most important things we have, if you remember, if, if, if any of you voted early for like, um, for the runoff or, uh, last of a reelection, if you notice that sometimes it takes a little longer to register, to do the application to vote, you have to get your license and scan it. And so the state has worked, uh, with the company that, um, handles like the early voting and the poll pads. And, um, and they have a new, a new addition to our system that pretty much it takes about forty seconds to get applications processed for when you go in to vote. So that will hopefully cut down the lines for early voting. Um, you come in, show your I. D., comes up on the poll pad, you review it, you sign it. We, we create your voter's card and you off to go vote on, on the, um, machine. So that's something that we really looking forward to because instead of taking almost two, two minutes, three minutes per voter, um, when they tried it back in November and December, um, not for us, but they tried it on other counties. I mean, it, it took less than one minute to process a voter, um, to go, to go vote. So that's something that we're really looking forward to doing because anytime we can make it easier for voters to vote, hopefully that will increase voter participation, not just in Ware County, but statewide.
Carlos, one of the big controversies of conspiracy going around was absentee ballots. Can you explain the process of applying for and using and turning in an absentee ballot? Who can do it? How it's done?
Okay, um.
Or is that settled yet?
Well, it's pretty settled unless there's some changes in this legislature. I don't think there's nothing that's out there that's dealing with absentee ballot processing, okay? Um, but family members, of course, the person that can come in and request an absentee ballot. You don't, you don't have to have an excuse.
You don't?
You don't have to, you don't, you don't have to be out of town or show that you're gonna be out of town or in a hospital or things like that. Uh, if you, if you wanna vote by absentee ballot, it's about seventy-eight days before each election. That opens up the registration period, okay? You can come in and you fill out the application for absentee ballot, okay? And then at the start of early voting, that's when we actually send out absentee ballots.
So you mail them to the applicant?
We mail them right to the applicant. So if you request an absentee ballot, we'll, we'll mail it to your home of residence. Um, or if you say, I'm gonna be out of town and I, I'm gonna be in, you know, West Virginia, okay? We'll, we'll mail it to that home and, you know, wherever you, whatever address you give me for that, um, time.
So can, can people who are employed by campaigns go around and request people to apply for absentee ballot and then gather them all up and turn them in?
No, sir. Cannot do that. Um, groups can, um, send out absentee ballot applications. But if they do that, they have to indicate on the bottom of the form that this, that this is a form that's provided by a party or a person, not, not, not the official form as provided by the Secretary of State's office. So, so if.
Do you accept that form?
If it comes back, if it's your form and it's assigned and has your identifying information, which it could be your, your, your driver's license number, um, you know, um, what, what we have on the system. Driver's license number, um, registration number, uh, not registration number, excuse me.
Passport number.
Um, well, you can't use that for voting, passport. But on the absentee ballot, it needs to be your driver's license number, um, there's something else. You stop me.
So privately printed applications are recognized as legal by the state?
You said privately printed applications?
Right. The part, the Republican or Democratic parties that, we got tons of them in the mailbox. The application, y'all accept those, like you said?
Now, back in twenty twenty, that was before the law changed, okay? You can give out a blank application, but it has to be filled out by the voter.
Okay.
Okay? And it has to be signed and the, with the identifying information. So, so a pre-printed, if I have, if, 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 group A, B, C wants to send out a, um, uh, applications, they have to put down at the bottom, this, this application is being provided by so-and-so, but it cannot be pre-printed, pre-printed.
Okay.
You have to fill it out yourself, okay? With your address, name and everything else, driver license number. And, um, for some reason, that last identifier is just stopping me right now.
Can you apply for an absentee ballot on the portal?
Yes, sir.
You can?
Yes, sir. And it comes straight to our computer. Uh, we can print it off and, and that's just like, um.
Just like me walking in and filling out the form?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because you still have to put in your driver's license number and your identifier, also security number, that's just it, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I got one. All the folks that's in nursing homes and stuff. I mean, there are rumors going around that people take those out there and slays votes from people in the nursing homes. I got a brother out there, he couldn't tell you what he have for dinner today. But I'd hate to know I went to your office and checked to see if he voted in the last, last election. You know, there is voted, not him not knowing. I mean, are there any kind of, uh, security checks y'all do on that?
Well, one, if the, if the voter, uh, like a nursing home voter, if a voter is not, um, not able to vote, okay? Um, there, there's ways that the probate, you know, you can get them probated where they can't, um, you know, they have their voting rights removed, okay? Because if they, you know, if they don't know what's, what they have for breakfast, they may not be competent enough to vote, okay? But the activities coordinator is kinda like a deputy registrar to where they can go out there and they can turn the applications in to us. We mail them to, to, to like your brother, okay? And if your brother agrees, that person can help them. And I have confidence, Baptist Village is really great at doing this. They will sit down with them, okay? And they'll fill them out. And but then they have to sign it also saying, I assisted this, this client, uh, this resident um, in, in preparation of their ballot, okay? And believe me, they don't wanna lose their job or their freedoms by, by, by changing one vote. So when we get it, when we get them back in, we check them, we make sure they're signed by the, um, resident. And then it has to be signed by the, um, activity person or the person that's helping them. And a lot of times it's the parents, uh, uh, I mean, not the parents, it may be the kids or a relative that'll be out there with them. And then they have to sign it also to say they assisted that person's, um, you know, absentee ballot, uh, application. So we will know if they're being assisted. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, uh, appreciate you coming and updating this, uh, Mr. Nelson and also Danny. You know, he comes whenever he get, can and kinda give us a little synopsis, I think, when he was at the, uh, conference down in Jekyll Island. And I think I told him, made a request, well, maybe we can have the main man to come in here, you know, and we get it from him.
But he's pretty much the main man who, uh, he knows.
Well, I didn't wanna say it before you.
Elections that I know.
But it seemed like you got a, a good board there, uh, everything is working well. One question I had is, I know one of the things, I guess it's likely for better term, it's been plaguing the election board. It's having enough workers to work the polls. So how is that coming along?
Statewide, that's an issue. I think that's a nationwide issue. Um, and a lot of it is, um, you know, a lot of our poll workers are, are elderly. You know, they're retired, you know, and they're doing, they're doing great work for us. Um, and, and, you know, most of the working age population, you know, they can't get off work, you know, and, and, and they don't wanna help. So we rely on the retirees pretty much, um, or the housewives or househusbands, people that's free to do that. So it's, it's a struggle every election, you know? And, and the tough part about elections, you know, um, our last election was, um, in December. So it'll be like a year, almost a year and a half, you know, from December to the next election. So we got to somehow be creative and keep them active to where they don't find something else to do. And then, and then when we call them and really need them, they say, well, I don't wanna do it anymore. And so it's, uh, someone's always up and down, up and down. We never have enough. We, we never can have enough. Uh, poll workers, I wish we did. And, uh, like, uh, people get ill, sick that day, whatever. And so sometimes we really, we really strapped for poll workers and some, and sometimes it's better than, you know.
So what, what is, what does it pay right now for poll worker working, say, a full day during an election?
Uh, they get paid hourly, um, nine dollars an hour for the clerks. Um, assistant managers, nine fifty, and, uh, managers, ten dollars. So basically, it's about a hundred and, hmm, hundred and forty dollars a day.
So do you think that's something that would be kind of an incentive to, you know, I guess recruit or get people more involved with it, just bump up the pay just a little bit more because that's kinda?
Yeah, we were able to bump it up a little bit, um, last year. Um, we still one of the lowest around in the South Georgia's low period. I, I, you know, I surveyed some counties, um, even like Thomasville and stuff, you know, their, you know, their manager gets like a hundred and seventy-five dollars minimum for that day. Um.
So, and they probably don't have a lot of problem keep getting people to work either, do they?
They still do.
They still do?
Yes, they still do, you know, because it's still a, a full day. It's, it's a lot of work. And a lot of it is because, you know, we talk about the conspiracy things, you know, and I, and I tell people all the time with, you know, uh, and we understand that, uh, sometimes, um, you know, our candidate may not win, whether it's on this commission or the city or statewide or, or the federal election. But when that happens and we start accusing our poll workers of, you know, of wrongdoing, most times that poll worker is your church member. You know, you know, it's a person that, you know, that you know whoever, and you'd be like, well, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about the others. You know, we, you know, we got great, great poll workers. They're honest. I mean, you know, and the one thing, we don't look at whether they're Democrats or Republicans because every, every poll worker we have, you know, they, you know, they, they wanna make sure it's done right, you know? And so when we, so when we get there and that gets discouraging when people come in, I know you're gonna steal my vote. Well, Mr. So-and-so, I mean, I go to your church. I mean, you know, what do you mean? We're gonna steal your vote, you know, that kinda thing. So people get, people get a little tired of that. And, and I understand that because it's, um, it's, it's, it's really thankless. The job is really thank, thankless. And the board and, and me and this Lord, we, we do whatever we can to really, really, really thank Him and praise Him every chance we get because it's, it's, it's tough.
Well, I, I had, I was, was in a conversation with someone and they had high praises for the Waycross Election Board. They really didn't call a name, but he was talking about it and they even, I think, employed, not employed, but tapped into you all to try to help them out with some of their issues, you know? So I think that speaks well for the office and their employees, the board and everything. And, uh, been hearing a lot of good things about you, then you hear some negative things about you, you know?
I'm used to that. I've served it for twenty years, whatever, so I'm used to both sides of that.
But I would say this more po, more positive than negative. And, uh, and I think since you've been there, I mean, you pretty much jumped right into the fire when you got into it. I mean, you, you hit the, hit the fire and been in the fire. And I think you might be cooling off a little bit right now, but I think that's good. And, uh, just keep up the good work. And, and Danny, the board, I think they're doing a great job.
I'd say we have a great board, really, really have a really, really good board, um, great poll workers, and we, and we have good staff. So I'm proud of what we're doing in Ware County, and I think y'all should be proud too.
Of course, I got one other thing.
Yes, sir.
The new process that y'all doing now, let's speed up the election night process as far as getting the totals out instead of ten, eleven, twelve o'clock, both candidates already have.
I tell you what, no, over the, over the past three years, we have never been past ten o'clock. The fair first election was that crazy one during COVID that we, that we reported late. And I think everybody, because it was just weird with the, with the complexities of the election. But ever since then, the latest we reported, Friday, nine forty-five at the latest.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they're on, they're on site. We take pride in being able to look at the screen on T. V. At the Secretary of State thing and see our color change to a hundred percent reported, so.
I know the years pass, it might be twelve, one o'clock in the morning.
And that's true.
Man, that'd drive you crazy, especially if your name is on the ballot. I have one bad, not worried about it.
But, uh, but, uh, you know, I mentioned the board, and I'm not saying this because, um, Mr. Danny is here. But, um, you know, he, he attended training with me, um, up in Atlanta to learn how to do the election night, um, all, everything, dealing with the election night, um, activities. And so because one of my fears is, one, you know, we used to use a technician. Um, and technicians, you know, they charge, you know, uh, thousands of dollars per night. But my thing is all about control. I don't, I don't want, I don't want the election night to be in the hands of somebody that's, you know, just a contracted person. And so we, we took it amongst ourselves to go get trained. So we do all our election night ourselves. And Danny, Danny went and, um, to the training with me. And so, you know, he's not an expert, but I, but, but he knows enough with our checklist to where if something happened to me, I think he can, he can do it also and get it by that nine thirty, nine forty-five time that we, that we try to strive for. Yes.
Good. Anything else? Anybody else? Carlos, we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos.
Thank you very much.
All right. We got one more. Mr. Yarborough, about the drainage on Old One Twenty-two. Would you come up, please?
Anyhow, what, my name is Zin Yarborough, I'm pleased y'all all know. Um, we've got five spots that I've actually been up here before. And I've talked to Mr. Brooks, and they were gonna put some culverts in. They have not put the culverts in. The last time he come out, he did mark where he was gonna put them. But then it, it died. That was a year ago.
Yeah.
The, the problem is they keep bringing dirt and filling the road back in until it rains the next time. And then it washes out. But just like right now, the north side of Old One Twenty-two, the water's up to the top of the road. South side is dry. And I, all I'm trying to do is get it on the schedule where we can get these five locations. Two of them are on Old One Twenty-two. There's a third one that is on the corner of Ed Davis and One Twenty-two. When they filled in the road on Ed Davis and didn't put a culvert down, it re-diverted the water, so it washes it out on One Twenty-two. The, the fourth spot is right there about the middle ways where they filled in on Ed Davis. And there's a fifth spot where Ed Davis, Hasty, and, uh, Perch Creek all come together right there. It washes out every single time too. But, and the biggest fallacy, like I say, is the fact that everything on the north side of Old One Twenty-two, the water right now is a foot higher than what it normally is because it can't get out. Uh, so I'm here to try to figure out what, what we gotta do to get it on agenda, to get them, get it fixed and quit patching it all the time.
I know we were, Scott might know, but we, we had a hard time getting pipe there for a while. I don't even know if he had to put that off on account of that, if he couldn't get the delivery.
Tell me that when he come out and, uh, located and put flags up where they were supposed to be putting them at.
Right.
Uh, he said they were having a hard time getting the pipe. Cause I think y'all quit using the, uh, plastic pipe altogether and either go with concrete or steel.
It hasn't, excuse me, it hadn't been that long since the first order came in, so I can get with Michael and see, see where it is and is.
Right. Because, well, this, this, actually, the last time I talked with him about it was about a year ago. Okay? Now, I did talk with him, uh, I'm gonna say six weeks, eight weeks ago, when we had that last hard rain.
Yes, sir.
Cause the culverts on, uh, my alley, which also drains that section that I'm talking about, all three of them were two-thirds of the way blocked off, which it shocked me because he was there the next day and took care of that. all three of them were two-thirds of the way blocked off, which it shocked me, because he was there the next day and took care of that. But anyhow, that's, that's my, my thing, is I need to know, get a rough idea of when we can get it on the schedule.
Yeah.
Is there any old pipes already under the road that probably not working, or?
Um, on Old One Twenty-Two, there was two culverts going underneath. The one is still open, but the second spot, I don't even know where it's at no more, because they've added so much dirt and all, and the ends have got covered up. I have no idea where, where it's at. There's a pipe there somewhere, but you can't, somebody's just gonna have to dig up the road until he hit it, because it's that filled up. There was one last thing, that when they come through and graded, Ed Davis, well, all the roads out there, but Ed Davis, they've cut that down, when they cut the ditches on both sides or pull the ditches. It is so narrow, if it's, if it's wet, if you meet a car, you're gonna have to back up a half a mile, because the road is so narrow, there's not enough room to pass on it. And, and that's a, I don't know how many of y'all have been down that road, but that road's got fifteen turns in it. So there's just no way for two cars to pass on it. I mean, if you get way too close to the ditch and it's wet, you know where you're gonna end up at.
Is that the portion that red here opened back up?
No. Um, the, um, no, that's on, Ed Davis, okay, you thinking of where, um, Odom Road, I think, ain't you?
Yeah.
Right, no, that's, okay, on Odom Road, if you look out, there's a huge swamp there, I call it a marsh. That water now is a foot higher in there than it has been in the past. I've been there since two thousand, I bought property in two thousand thirteen. It, it, like I say, it just can't, it all goes out underneath One Twenty-Two, and it can't get across right now.
Okay. County manager, give Mr. Brooks on that.
Yeah, we give. I appreciate it, is there any way possible for you, give me a call when, because we got a board meeting in a couple of weeks, and, and so I like to be able to tell them also.
I can reach you on your, this number here, on your sign issue, yes, sir, I can do that.
I appreciate it, I thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for working me in also.
Sure. All right, thank you, we'll look into it, see what we can do. All right. Okay, we'll go on to the agenda items. Albany Avenue Overpass Design Services. This item is to seek direction from the county commission on how staff needs to proceed from searching engineers and services for the Albany Avenue overpass. One suggestion could be for staff to advertise RFQs from Georgia DOT qualified engineering companies, and have the commission to rate the proposal. I guess what we're seeing is, we can do it by picking the ones we already have, or we can go back out.
Yes, sir.
And ask for other bids, and, uh, how y'all want to handle that one? We got two proposals from two different engineers, one from, let's see, Practical Design, and one from Atlas, uh, PDP, Practical Design Partners, and then we got one from Atlas. If, if we can use one of these, you know, and are y'all satisfied with us doing one of these that we already have?
Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, we've been kicking the can kind of down the road, down the road, and timing is the essence here, you know, I mean, we, uh, advertised, not advertised, but we promoted during the Splot referendum about, you know, the overpass on Albany Avenue, and I think my personal feeling that that's one of the things that tilt the scale in favor of people supporting the Splot, because everyone is impacted by the trains. I said that to say this, we had practical design partners come in, do a conceptual design, and we were pretty satisfied with that, and then, uh, we talked about maybe employing them or giving them, awarding them the, uh, engineering contract, but since that time, we did say, well, okay, maybe we get another, you know, design engineer come in, and we did. And I think all of us have had time to look over that and, uh, you know, dissect it, and, uh, I hope we all dissected it. And at this point, I think that we need to kind of move on with this project, uh. My feeling right now is that Practical Design Partners, I think they made a good presentation, Atlas made a good presentation, and I've had over the weekend compare both of them side by side, and, uh, apples to apples, you know, and I think right now, Practical Design Partners would be our best option, uh, and like I said, if we go and employ, I mean, go out for other beers, uh, you know, quotes from other, uh, engineers, it's just pushing that project that much further back. And, uh, we've already burned up some valuable time already, and, uh, I think we need to kind of just go, you know, step up to the plate, and, uh, either accept one of these, or, because we have promised people that we were going to do this project, and that's what I think we need to try to do.
Okay. Anybody else on discussion on it? You got it?
I agree with Commissioner Vurs, one, one question I have, Scott. We keep talking about state and federal help on this project, we've already been turned down by, on, for one federal grant. Where, where do we reach the point that we decide? When we started, it was only going to be one overpass to get over the railroad track. That was like the bridge in Jamestown, just get over Kettle Creek, get over the railroad track, and then a bunch of other streets ratted in. I mean, looks to me like we could get one engineer of record and then go through the whole thing and get started. And I agree with, um, Commissioner Vurs.
Yeah, who, whoever you choose, you can have a little workshop with them, and, um, and go through the design parameters and things of that nature, and, and settle it there, yes, sir.
Because if, if other funding is involved, then it's a higher level of engineering.
One of the thoughts I had, um, some time ago is it's, it's possible that you could put some of the funding, partial funding, um, asked for in the regional T-Spots. Say, you know, half of it, or one quarter of it, or whatever, and then that would free up money in the, in the two, uh, the Splos account that was just passed to do other roadwork.
Yeah, because one of the engineering firms has already told, I think Chairman and Commissioner Marner, we've got twelve million that we put on the Splos, and if I'm not mistaken, I, I was told that engineers have said that today you're looking at fifteen or sixteen already, and this is a long way down the road, and I mean, I'm just scared as dogged of being up there.
Well, and that was the other reason for, you know, because it's gonna take, their schedules that they have, I think, are twenty-four months, um, and that's barring any pickups from CSX and those kind of things.
Right.
Um, I think it might be best to at least try to have it designed to, uh, DOT standards, state standards.
Right.
So that way, if we go to, to apply on the, uh, the regional T-Spots, then it will meet their standards. And I think that's, that, that would be a requirement on their part, so if they're, the, the DOT standards are not as tight and rigorous as federal standards. So it might be a way of freeing up money in the Splos if we're able to secure some in the regional.
Well, I'm all for instructing the chairman to get as much T-Spots, regional T-Spots money as possible to apply to this project.
Sure.
We've got to have money from somewhere.
Right.
We don't want to really profit that.
It's possible that you can get that funding, and maybe by the time it's designed, we'll have enough of Splos money, and then just put them together and start construction.
I think that's important.
Yeah, you look at probably twenty-five before we're gonna be paying the contractor, you're looking at over two.
Correct.
You, you ain't even going out for a bid until the end of twenty-four.
Right.
And another thing, too, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and we really wanted to stay away from this federal and state money, even though, you know, it's good in its place and at the proper time, but in this case, we, uh, again, put out to the voters that we were gonna build this overpass, it's gonna be a sit-in kind of joint project, and this is why we can move a little quick on it, because we don't have the federal and state money involved. Once you put them into the mix, then it basically slows the project down. Because now you got to start dealing with a whole nother set of, uh, rules and regulations and things of that nature. So if we can do it alone, sit in the county, and like I said, maybe regional T-Spots money, I think we'll be ahead. But if we start getting into that federal monies and all that, you know, now we're going to a whole different thing. And, uh, one thing we got to bear in mind, too, is that it's twenty-four month timeline, both, uh, companies that, you know, we got these proposals from use the same timeline, but a lot of this is predicated on CSX. That's, that's the whole thing, it's contingent on CSX and their timeline and their cooperation. And, uh, once we get over that hurdle, we can kind of see them, see clearly then, but until that time, this is what we're gonna have to do, and this is one of the things that, uh, design partners, practical design, they working on, uh, I think St. Augustine Road, right now, they haven't started, but they have been, uh, employed for the engineering on that St. Augustine Road, so they have a connection already with CSX, and, uh, I think that's one of the good things, you know, they don't have to go and introduce themselves, they already know them. But as Jared said, too, that we just want to get over the tracks. All this other stuff, these fancy turns and going in there, that may be something that we have to address later on, but right now, we just want to get over the track, train them, and, uh, free up some of this congestion.
Well, we don't want a congested area like we have on this other side over here, though, we want it where automobiles can go under for the police force and the fire department. They can get under these roads instead of it being a, just a dead block.
Right.
So, uh, and, and we owe this to the taxpayers, they want, they want a bridge built, they want a way to get across that track. And, uh, that's the main thing, is what we promise the taxpayers. So it, it, either engineer, whoever y'all.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion to set practical design partners for the Albany Avenue Overpass Engineering.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We'll have to do that in the meeting.
We can't make a motion.
We'll hold the meeting right after this.
I'm ready to get through it. Okay, was that all on it? Anybody got any more questions on the overpass and the engineers? If we have any, not, let's move on, let's see what's next. Resolution for twenty twenty-three dash oh-six, selection of twenty twenty-three CDBG engineer. We got them, the engineers, we're gonna authorize selection of CDB engineer services.
Commissioners, I know last meeting, we went through the, uh, grading package that was done on, on all the engineers that applied for this project. My vote is satisfied with what we were given, and I'm, and I think we need to put it on the agenda and vote on it now. And I, I stand by the rating with statewide, it was the highest grade. Because we're getting close, if I understand it.
Yeah.
We either need to get an engineer or try again next year.
Yes, sir, well, I've checked on the surveying, and so far, the target area hasn't reached the seventy percent low and moderate income, but it's really close, so, um, I'm hoping, there's a few more houses left, I'm not sure how many more, twelve or fifteen. And, uh, if the surveying comes out good, then we can proceed from there, so. But then again, it's all competition, somebody else could, there's could be others that can, could qualify with the seventy percent, but, um, now, you know, the competition's still tough, you know, with, with that, when they get graded.
How many areas are we gonna do with this engineer?
Uh, just one, just one project, yeah, it's just the area, yes, sir.
We can't do two or three areas?
Just that one, that's all you can apply for is one, and then, and then you can apply, if you're suc- successful, you can apply every two years. Uh, but if it fails, you don't get, uh, you don't get awarded, then you can apply again the following year. And, um, so we have one going on now, and, um, so that one will finish up, and we have to, there's a standpoint where we have to have so much money in the one that we have now spent when these applications are turning.
That is the Emerson Park.
Yes, sir.
So by choosing an engineer now, that would probably be contingent upon us receiving a grant.
That's correct, that is correct.
Would be no pay unless we receive a grant.
Right, the survey has got the check off, and then, um, also get awarded, because you'll have all the other local governments in Georgia applying for these two.
Gotcha.
Okay, any more questions, comments on them engineers?
I'd like to get Mr. Brandon, if I could, to come up and, uh, talk about the CBDG grant going on in Emerson Park right now. I went over there and looked at it, but since I'm still new and fresh, I'd like his input on how it's looking and his opinion, because I know he's got a whole lot more experience than I do.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, the, uh, CDBG projects that are going right now is over in Emerson Park. There are several dirt portions that are still, uh, present there now, uh, Virginia Avenue, uh, Pennsylvania Avenue, New York and New Jersey Avenue, and, uh, what we're doing with this current CDBG that's under, currently under contract, under construction, is paving those dor- dirt portions of those streets there, just because of some of the, um, problems we have and the continuing issues we've had in the past with those. And, uh, so we're going in there, and, uh, we got a load of drainage pipe, which was good. They had been wait, been put off on, on that several different times, the load of drainage pipe came in, and so we were able to get started with that, and, uh, they started on Virginia Avenue down there at the end, and worked our way up Virginia Avenue, and it fell back to Pennsylvania Avenue on Friday. As I went about there, checked, checked on it, everything's been going pretty well with that. Um, the utility companies, uh, the power, new power poles have been set, and we're waiting for the telephone lines to be moved off those existing poles, so that those old poles can come down. There are some couple of places where there are going to be some conflicts at some intersections with our new pipes going in in those existing poles, so we're following, following that back up and trying to make sure that the utility companies are aware that that work is ready to go forward with, so those old poles can come down to resolve those conflicts. Um, and we're, we're, those, those guys out there working do a really good job, working around those utilities, doing everything they can to coordinate that work, and go, you know, above and beyond and do all they can to work around it as best they can. And so we'll just continue to fight that fight as we go forward. Uh, there were, the word was we were gonna get three more loads of pipe, which we were glad to hear about that, so that'll allow that work to continue on and, uh, continue to press and move forward. We've got some rain called for possibly this afternoon, and a pretty good chance for tomorrow, so they were trying to prepare for that as best they can, uh, to do some compactive efforts on Virginia, where they've been working, and there on Pennsylvania, to try to prepare that, those roadways for this, for this rain again. But, um, we've been doing really well with the weather so far while they've been out there, uh, it's been, it's been pretty good. Some, uh, some bad dirt in that area, uh, you, you, it looks good and sandy until you reach over there and pick it up, and it just, it's, uh, got some, some gummy in it, and I think that's been some of the problem we've had out there with the drain fields. With the setting, setting systems and everything out there, and that was a push for some of the, the sewer, sewer contract that went on several years ago, but I think it's because of those soils that are present, uh, especially around that, uh, canal there on Virginia, that lower block.
I know I broke through there and looked at it a couple of times, and to me, it looks good, but, you know, then again, I don't have as much experience as a lot of people in here. So I wanted your professional input, and the, I call it a facelift, because that's what the community members are calling it, is a facelift over in Emerson Park, which is what they've been waiting on for a long time. So we still got the, the road signs and the stop signs, they're gonna be upgraded, and new ones put in and that kind of stuff after the roads get done.
Yes, sir, I think there's probably some of that in the contract, I'll go back and look at those contracts to make sure that there's some sign work in that, whatever, whatever we need to do after the construction is complete.
Right.
We'll go ahead and we'll pick that up with a signed contract in there.
Well, some of those signs you just can't read.
That's correct, there's a lot of, of, uh, old, older signs in that area that probably need to be replaced, we'll take care of all that once we get. We'll take care of all that once we get all that construction completed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The, uh, see, the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, accept a Georgia DOT contract for the airport perimeter fence construction.
Yes, sir. This is a, uh, as you just mentioned, a resolution to accept DOT funding. Uh, we were actually awarded some monies that were turned back in to DOT on this fence project because originally it was gonna be broken into like three phases, only because of funding. And now that they made us aware that we are, we do qualify for this additional federal and state funds, um, it, our own, our match for this is altogether is about eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, we could take that out of the, the old splosh or take it out of, um, ARPA, but, um, being that we've been presented this extra money that we can use, uh, I would recommend that, that, uh, this get approved only for that reason. That way, they know that if there's monies out there that we'll, we'll use them. We try to do this with our streets and roads too, with LMEG funding, if the funding becomes available, try to take advantage of it.
The airport manager is here, could you call him forward for any questions in the board my house?
Yep, why he's coming, Mr. Chairman, to make Scott something.
Yes, sir.
Scott, uh, well, I guess maybe Jesse, he may be best to answer that question, but I'll wait after here. Yep, this will, this will take care of the whole airport, right?
It will, the, the whole perimeter of the airport, just some of the property is where we can't get on it, wetlands and stuff, but other than that, it'll be a full perimeter. What it'll do, it does several things, security is the biggest thing, animal mitigation, or we don't have deer, wildlife like that on the runway and stuff, that's a multi-million dollar airplane coming in out on a regular basis. The other part is, is we're gonna tie it into the fence, into prison, one of your big problems that are in that now is contraband coming in, and what they're doing is walking it across the airport property, two and three o'clock in the morning. If not, they're flying drones in, that's, would help them too, so it's a security thing all the way around, and it will take care of the whole airport going through.
How high would it be?
Seven foot with twelve inches of barbed wire on top.
So, first have a hard time climbing it.
Yeah.
That, that cost is, they're estimating one point two million?
Yes, sir.
And... But it hadn't went out for bid yet, or they don't know that, or that, is that what they go?
It, it did, well, I went back and I had to get with Brandon, it did go out to bid, the bid hasn't been awarded yet. Um, the apparent low bidder is, uh, is it Pete?
Pete Brothers.
Pete Brothers out of Butler, Georgia. Um, it was advertised locally, newspaper, all over the place, and only, I think they only received two bids, I don't remember right off hand what the other one was, but, um, that, hopefully the next meeting will have that to be, be awarded.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you said, you mentioned about the BSO, okay, if we agree to this resolution, will it be rebid it out, uh, will we go it?
Well, that's, this would really come, need to come first, you got to accept the funds, because they got to have that within the next two to three days for DOT, because if not, they're gonna go out to other local governments to see if they want the money. Um, so that's why this has to come first, and then, once we know we secured the funds, um, I think it has to be back by this Friday, I think now that it hits me, but, um, then would the bid award can be taken, can take place after that. We wouldn't have the money, if you can't award it without the money, so to speak.
So the local contractor will be able to bid on this, do you say it's already been bided?
It's already been bid out.
Bid out, but they'll probably bid it again to the local.
That's what I'm trying to say, if they, once, if we do this tonight, get the funds, then can we rebid it? Uh, do we have to stay with the bid that we had?
Who did the bidding, local or DOT?
Um, Passeroe Associates, they, 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 they designed it, they put out the bid specs, um, and then it was advertised locally. Uh, we, the two largest contractors here didn't bid on it, even though it was advertised, it was in the newspaper too.
From what I understand, TNT did bid on it.
They did.
Their bid was rejected, so they used another general contractor, were going under their name. And that's, I don't know why, but it came from Passeroe, the DOT, that it was, uh, it was turned down.
They rejected the bid.
I'll tell you, that's the reason why I didn't recognize their name, because it was someone else.
DOT turned it down? I don't know if Passeroe did or DNT. Scott can get some answers.
Yeah, I'll find out, I didn't, that's why I wasn't aware that that was the difference, sure will.
And one other thing too, uh, that's what I talked to you, and one of the concerns I have is by the time we put up a chain link fence, if you don't control the weeds and the shrub and all that stuff beside it, that's why it start growing into it, but you say that the way you got designed is that it'd be like a fifteen foot on each side, I believe?
Sure, there's enough to go around with and spray, keep, keep the roof out of.
Keep it clean. But the federal government fund a million and the state is a hundred and twenty-four, and the local is what we got to pay. But then you say that we had some money back from the state, take care of that, okay.
I got one question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
On this weekend, uh, coming up, same weekend, we got Swamp Fest. Uh, one of my constituents reached out to me over the weekend, uh, and his questions were, uh, on that same weekend that we have Swamp Fest, it's called Funding the Sun, that, you know, I remember being a kid years ago when we'd have it here, it just brought in a bunch of people, and even a couple of people went out there, I don't know if they met with you, Mr. Jesse, or whoever's working out there, but those airport shirts that they got were highly complimented, and they want to know if they were gonna be on sale as another fundraiser, if food was gonna be, we know gas is gonna be out there that the pilots can actually buy, but what about food, because?
This year, there's not, what our plans are, we're already making plans for next year to go back to where we could and have pilots come in and be able to do barbecue, hamburgers or hot dogs, whatever we decided to, and go back to the way it used to be.
Because there's already, I know he said that there's already, uh, twenty people that's contacted him that's gonna be flying their planes in here on that weekend, at least twenty, and that's why he asked about the, the food that we normally provide, and I'm telling you, they, they, they were excited when they saw those shirts, so they would like them there to be bought.
I'll check on the shirts and stuff.
They said they look really good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, let's carry that over. Any more, any more on it, anybody got anything else?
Hold on.
Okay. Okay, storage facility lease agreement, three seventy-eight, Ozzie Davis Parkway.
We gotta do D, don't we?
Yeah.
We're talking about C, is this, D is a sep- a separate in it?
Oh, yes, sir, it is, yeah, uh, under tab D is a resolution to approve the work order for Passeroe. It's on the, the, uh, the airport fence, um, perimeter fence construction phase. This, this amount that is, uh, of the work order for this is included in those numbers in the one that was just discussed, so it's all included.
So what, is it two different things?
Well, it's, they're related, they're related. One is to accept the funding from DOT, from DOT for the, the funding of the project, and then part of that funding, uh, includes this amount for Passeroe for the work order, which is under D.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just asked, was there any more on it? I asked, was there anything else on it, he said no. Okay. But we gotta carry it over to the meeting, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the storage facility lease agreement, three seventy-eight, Ozzie Davis Parkway.
What this is, is there's a storage or a building that the county owns down here on the corner of Alice and Ozzie Davis Parkway that we lease, um, it was entered into a lease, uh, back in two thousand thirteen and went for three years, but it was never renewed, we never knew anything about it till it was brought back up to us. Uh, the previous company that owned it, uh, sold out to the one that the lease is, um, is, is with, and at that time, it was a lease at five hundred dollars a month, um, that's been ten years ago, and we checked the prices for square footage, there, they range from six to eight dollars per square foot now for, uh, that dry storage, and it's just recommended that we set it at seven dollars and fifteen cent of, a square foot. There's, I think, twelve hundred and sixty square feet in there. They use that for their records and files, they're on the floor.
That's the home care people right behind it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You might remember that was the one that was hit by the car, that knocked a hole inside of it.
The State VA used to be their veteran administration.
Long time ago, yes, sir.
EMS used to be there a long time ago, didn't it? Yeah. Okay, just carry it over. Any discussion on it, anybody got anything on it, raising that lease?
I think they got a bid fitting improper.
Thank you. Be fair to the raise. Scott, the other buildings that we have right here.
Yes, sir.
Are they leased out to anybody?
They're ours, uh, they're counties, um, there's various things stored in them, um.
Development Authority has all their Christmas, big gigantic Christmas ornaments stored, downtown Development Authority.
Really? Paying the lease on it?
There's some, there's some benches or pews or something by the courthouse, isn't it?
There is, yes, sir, yep, they moved, they moved those, um, some extra ones that were upstairs, they moved those out and stored them over there, that was the old, old, uh, benches from the court, courthouse, uh, courtroom.
Courtroom, wasn't it?
Yep, there's various things, there's some files over there and the larger one that's up off of, uh, the street.
Is it being utilized like it ought to be, I mean, is there any way we can start leasing that out or whatever?
Uh, it, they might be, uh, we can check it out, see if any of it can be consolidated into one, and then see if it's possible to do that.
Probably could do that.
Is there any parking area they'd have to use the parking lot here?
They'd have to use the parking lot just inside of it.
It's mainly dry storage, I mean, there's no...
Yes, sir, those were the buildings that were bought when they were, uh, back when the...
San Martin Road building.
Yeah, all that was being remodeled.
Okay.
That brings up, uh, when you get a manager report, I've got a question.
Okay, y'all through with the storage facility, okay, we're carrying that one over, we carry it over, okay?
Carry it over.
All right, now we're gonna go to the county manager report.
Um, the only thing I have that I was wanting to mention is just to make you aware that the volunteer firefighter recruitment meeting is tonight at six thirty out of Station One. I just thought I'd mention that for folks who might be interested in attending. That's where the fire chief is right now, they're getting ready for it.
If I may ask, the, the old Dodge building that we've moved all the computer network stuff out of, this is jammed up to the, um...
DA's office.
Yeah, DA's office. Where, where are we on removing that so that DA's office can be renovated?
I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, all of them's been moved out of Carlos, I don't think Carlos is here, but, um, I believe they got all the computers out of there, it was, he said he estimated somewhere between five and six hundred of them, and they moved them into one of those stor-, the smaller storage building back here. Uh, but I'll need to check with him, I think they got them all moved out, so at that point, we would be able to take them, take that building down.
Yeah, I think I talked with him.
It's caused a lot of problems with it being attached to the other one.
Yeah, I think I talked with him about it because I was asking about all the old computers and stuff, and he said that they have people sometime that come in just buy pallets of them and they go and salvage out what they can, but he was talking about how bad a shape, you know, that building was, you know, the mold and, you know, uh, leaks and stuff like that, and I think I asked the same question, what were, were plans to do with that building? I think, guess just raise it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To repair the DA's office.
And then be able to get to the DA's office from that side, because there, they have some, some pretty bad water leaks there against that wall where it's connected.
I just wondered.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Got any information coming?
How are we coming along with the LMEG money? Has it been approved?
Uh, yes, sir, it has. Um, I don't know that we received payment yet though, from what I remember. I, I don't remember seeing the, the notice on that.
So once that money comes in, we can go ahead and start bidding out some of these jobs that we've got that money set aside to spend on?
Are they working on the design, like on the story of road, I mean, that's a lot of work there, just use that as an example?
Hey, Brandon, can you give an update on that story on where we were?
Yeah. Yes, sir, I talked to, uh, surveyor, uh, about flagging that right of way, and he was gonna be working that into the schedule of seeing where the right of way is, um, out there, that's, uh, the, the existing right of way. I think that was a big issue with the, the design of that project to begin with, and some of the problems that are out there now. Uh, there's...
On the story of road. On the story of road?
Yes, sir, you know how the shoulders were kind of high, and it looked like the, the pavement had a lot of pothole and everything going on? And they said when they tried to clip the shoulders, the pavement tries to go down, it's pretty steep ditches because it's narrow, and so, um, uh, it's gonna be kind of, uh, contingent on how we try to approach on redoing that. I did get a price on, uh, reconstruction of that thing, where they go in there and build that pavement off and, uh, and mix soil cement back in with everything. I think that was gonna be around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Reclaim it, like the reclaim it.
Yeah. That's, uh, trying to just, I think that was another issue, there's not very much base there. I think they tried to use the old sand clay base, and I, I think it was kind of, um, probably questionable, how good of a sand clay it was that was there. So, uh, I think there's been a numbers of issues that have led to that, uh, pavement portion of that kind of, uh, getting in such a bad shape so soon.
Yeah, that would probably be a good project to try that reclaiming on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, reclaim the whole thing.
Uh, but that's where we're at on that, there's, uh, kind of a couple of questions in getting started on that, that project that we just need to try to decide which way to go, and then, uh, we'll put that out to, to bid and then go from there.
Okay.
The streets, the streets back of, um, El Shauny's or Hoggin Bones, those little streets that's on the list, LMEG list, they've got enough right of way, right, so that won't be a problem?
Yes, sir, uh, there, there's, existed right of way that was, uh, put in when that was, was developed, so the vision was put in.
And one other question on, on Jamestown project?
Yes, sir.
You know, the whole project, pha-, in phase two, getting access down ABC Avenue, and those of us who've been out there see that there's a big problem with CSX and adjoining property owner of getting their right of way straightened out. At what point do we start that process, working with them to see where that road is going through there?
Yes, sir, after discussions with, um, Commissioner Barber and, uh, kind of the, trying to determine what we wanted to do with that, um, I went back to Trent Long and let him know that, hey, you know, we, we want to try to look at this again and try to see what we can do. Knowing that, we ran into the stumbling block with CSX the first time with us being on their right of way and three hundred and fifty thousand dollar construction agreement that they were requiring for us to do that. I think at the time, the commission felt like that was too much money put into a construction agreement. So the thought process, from what I've been hearing from everybody now, would be to try to get off of the railroad right of way as much as we can, get across the creek and tie it in to Turner's Road. And so therefore, maybe only work we might have on the railroad property would be on that north side, tying that existing road that's there that we rode out there and seen in with whatever new road we put in to get across that creek bottom.
Just don't see how we're gonna put a new road on CSX right of way.
You, it would be, you know, limiting that, the impact to the right of way just to tying it in to that existing.
Just let it run out and drive up the hill in, in a car, right?
Yes, sir.
Not do any improvements?
Not be any improvements within the CSX right of way, other than just tying that in.
Right, okay, I just want to know, Steve and I talked about it, could this?
Yes, sir, and that, we were, the idea there was for him to get something together and then bring that before the commission and let y'all review that and say, yes, that's what we, that was, that was our intention, we want to move forward with that, and then you could have something you can, you know, put out to bid and try to get turned around pretty quick.
Well, it looks like that bridge project is coming together nicely, um, and it'll soon be time to fit it, just get out of Jamestown, get it done.
Yes, sir.
We spent four or five years out there already.
Yes, sir, they were supposed to be back out there this week to start back driving piles around the south side.
I'm talking about, uh, uh, ABC down to Jordan.
Yes, sir.
They've got the bridge under control, it looks like.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
I would just like to say also, uh, I appreciate, I think, Scott, I guess you were one responsible for putting the pictures in the paper about the paving projects and all, and, and I think that's, that's good whenever we can, you know, let the public know, hey, that we, we moving along. And I think that's, that's good whenever we can, you know, let the public know, hey, that we, we moving along. I know it moves slow sometimes, but hey, let them know that we're making progress on it. And, uh, so I just think we need to continue the momentum that we got right now and just do what we're going to do. And, uh, also, uh, I'd just like for everyone just to remember the people in, uh, I believe it's what, Roland Fork, Mississippi and the twisters that come through there and the devastation, you know, and, uh, sometimes we just, we don't realize how blessed we are till you see something like that. And, uh, so my heart and prayers go out to those people. And also, it's unfortunate, but we had another mass shooting, uh, at a school, school shooting, I'll put it that way, in, uh, Nashville, Tennessee, you know, and at last report I got three adults and three children. And, uh, you know, it's just getting to where it's almost like the norm and that, that shouldn't be in this country. So, uh, just keep those people in your prayers also.
Mr. Chairman, on a, on a lighter note, I'd like if you agree to put on the upcoming agenda, the appointment of Melinda Brooks to county clerk. She's doing all of the pr- uh, training, getting all that done. This will go ahead and let her take over officially and give her standing with the, um, clerk association. So I, I request that we do that.
I agree.
Yeah, and I agree also, Darren. Now, this will be more or less of, uh, uh, like I'm trying to find the right word. Other words, the title, instead of being a minister.
The contingency to her.
It'd be the clerk.
County clerk official.
But everything else stays the same as well.
Yeah, salary remains same, Ms. Wiggery.
And I, I agree she has been doing a yeoman job as far as trying to get her training and I applaud her for that. And that's what we need to do, all of us, you know, in the training, we can avail ourselves as elected officials, uh, whether you serve on boards or whatever, you need to do that because that will make you a more effective and more informed, you know, official. So I think that, that's good, you know, whenever we can get this trained because sometimes it helps us out and keeps us from doing things that we think we can do and not doing things that we know we can't do.
I agree.
I have a other thing. Have a big department come along on the, uh, the walking track, tennis court, all that stuff.
Um, I don't know. We got, I'm waiting on getting a, um, a proposal to renovate that court. Um, and the gentleman that was supposed to be working on it got sick, came down with COVID, I think, and hadn't seen it, but I'll check on him tomorrow and see if he can get that to me. Um, because of the price that he gave me, he said, gave me a ballpark price of total renovation anywhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
Good, great.
Yeah, and, um, he said, I, cause he's seen the pictures of it. But, uh, I'll get with him tomorrow and see if I can get a proposal from him.
So what did they, I mean, we're not talking about constructing a new tennis court, right?
You, you got, there's cracks in the concrete, um, I guess that may be, I don't know if it's asphalt or not, but that was one of the prices he gave me was just to go in totally renovate it, paint it, new nets, new fencing, the whole works.
Fence should be good.
Jess, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I could. Uh, going back to the airport, I forgot to mention it earlier, April fifteenth is going to be the Black Pilots Association flying. Uh, Commissioner Burris has been involved with it. This is going to be the second year we're doing it. There'll be food and drinks out there. They're doing airplane rides for kids. They're really pushing the side of coming to pilot is what they're looking for. So I was just going to mention that. And the other thing, with the road paving, they paved my road. I appreciate it, y'all. It seems kind of funny after forty years to pull out and, on pavement. But anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you did.
Davis called me about Burstfield out there.
Let me know what you do.
Okay. And, uh, she wants them roads mowed out there. And she wants somebody to move all that furniture. She said that they haul most furniture out there, you just need to drive down there and look at it.
People dumping.
Yeah.
I went out there a while back and there was quite a bit of.
You got to go out, go around it, they get down the road, down there, go in there to Burstfield. You know where I'm talking about. Ms. Davis, she just called me this morning about it.
Yeah, that's kind of like the unofficial official dumping site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the road, she said the road, the debris growing over the road is bad. I got two or three calls on that about places where the, the, uh, where you're not mowing these, uh, curves. You keep them clean. And, and another fellow called about the, uh, Knight Avenue right there, the crossing. He said you can't see a train on the one that turned off nearby, uh.
For what?
Out there, out there, around that Griffin store. Go across, I believe he said right there, that crossing there is next to us. Have a, have a bad time. Uh, they like got hit by a train one morning. They couldn't see it for the trees.
Yeah.
That's on, that's on Knight Avenue?
Yeah, on the crossing, on Knight Avenue over to the Bruggers Highway, where crosses the Bruggers line.
And, and right now they're running more trains on that line. It used to be just one train a day, you know, from the local one. Now, to try to alleviate some of the congestion, they're running some trains that way and I think they're picking up on the short line there and they're going out somewhere. So, uh, you know, it alleviates congestion, but now you got people where they used to just one train, now you got several trains a day.
Yeah.
Going down there. So, uh, just need to look at it.
Yeah. I think that we need to maybe put another mower or something on these, uh, closed areas around there where the, we do have a lot of bushes hanging over the roads. And they're not moving them off them. On a lot of curves and on these dark streets.
Talking about the mowing and stuff, I've had several calls about the people appreciate the work that the road department has done up on Old Nichols Highway, Dickley Highway, Timor Dixie Road. If y'all haven't been up there, you need to get a look at it where they mulcher.
Go see some of them that ain't been done.
I know we're working on them. We're working on them.
They need to move around there.
And it, it was that maybe we would buy us one of them mulcher heads to go on the excavator that we've got now and keep that thing running seven, eight months out of the year to keep some of these roads clean down here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just also like to, you know, piggyback on what Jess was saying about the, uh, the, uh, aviation event that's going to take place on the fifteenth. And, and this is open for everyone and it's really, like you said, it's to get children or young people, uh, motivated and, you know, about aviation. And, uh, the gentleman that sponsors this and that's doing it, John Ratcliffe, he's a, he was a pilot for Ford. I forgot how many years he was there, chief pilot and everything. So he's the one that started this and he had all kind of high praise for Waycross Airport whenever he dedicated his personal plane. So this is how this came about. And, uh, so was a great event last year. We had it the same day at Swamp Fest. It was still great, but we made sure that we wouldn't conflict with Swamp Fest this year. And so that's why it's going to be on the fifteenth. It won't be on Easter weekend. So, uh, if you can bring the kids out, people really enjoyed it. Uh, they had, you know, music out there. They had T-shirts. They had, uh, different things set up out there and, uh, it was, it was a good event. That was the first year. And, uh, so we appreciate everything. The Jesse, uh, the fire department, uh, sheriff department, everyone, you know. Michael Brooks, he assisted greatly, you know, with different things. So we appreciate everything that everyone did.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more?
Mr. Chairman, I got, I got a couple of things. I remember getting a, uh, I think we all got it, communication over the weekend. And I'd like to give a, a thank you to our first responders with the texts that we got sent this weekend, how busy they were. We had to call from mutual aid from three other counties and they responded. So I want to give a big shout out to them and tell them thank you for what they do. And, uh, also for those that, I watch the news a lot now that I'm getting a little older, but you know Putin, Vladimir Putin, got to keep DOD in your prayers. I got a, we all got some kind of family members or something in the military at one time or another, must be retired now or I got a brother that's serving right now. And, uh, he's already put nuclear weapons in Belarus and he's calling it as a warning to West, which is us. So, uh, I know some people don't take that seriously until that button's pushed, but when you got somebody in the military as close to you as I do, like my brother, Mr. Leonard, his son, uh.
Got two granddaughters and.
Two granddaughters in there. So, you know, this, this is something that has a, a, a chance to touch every one of us in some way, form or fashion. So we need to be in prayer for our country and also in prayer for our soldiers, men and women that, that stand that line for our protection because I think it's going to get nasty.
Good thought. Okay. Any more? Appreciate them comment.
Thanks, sir.
Let's, uh, I hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
So move.
Got a motion today. All of it favor.
All right.
Need to adjourn. Well, you'll take ten minutes.
And we done did a prayer and a flag related, so I'm gonna move on. Uh, how about we need to approve the agenda?
What's on move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
You got a motion and a second, all in, well as gold. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
The Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, excuse me for my, but anyway, we got a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Scott gonna read it for us. He said he'd read it for us, and then we're gonna...
You want to also, after I read the proclamation, get your picture made, a group picture to put? Did Danny already leave?
And then we're...
He did, but Louie's gonna do it.
And then we'll ask them.
We got it all settled in. All right.
Okay.
Uh, Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas over three point six million cases of child abuse and neglect are reported every year, and over nine thousand were reported in Georgia in twenty twenty. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solution requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Wecross and Ware County. And whereas child abuse can have a long-term psychological, emotional, physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeeded because of partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and face-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we ought, that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to prom, to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Elmer Thrift, Chairman, do hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Ware County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to promote the safety and well-being of all children and families, and to recognize the child welfare workforce and allies who work tirelessly to protect our children. And we honor those, we, and we honor the strength and resilience of adult survivors of child abuse.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Anybody wanna come up and talk? Tell us about y'all's dream?
Y'all, yeah, Tess, would you come out and tell us what?
Tell us what y'all do.
If you wanna, we gonna give you a minute to share with us.
I'm not with you. Do I come right here?
Yeah, yeah, be all right.
Um, just wanna say thank you to Ware County. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Scott, uh, for allowing us to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we do know that it is an epidemic in Georgia and in Ware County. Uh, Satilla alone saw six hundred sixty-four children last year for child abuse, sexual abuse, and neglect. So, uh, we just wanna thank you for recognizing, um, this month and really bringing awareness to this issue, and bringing our communities together to better strengthen our families that in turn strengthen our kids and, um, and better provide them, um, a safe and loving future. And we just appreciate our sister agencies that have come up here as well, um, with Satilla Abusey Services, and we've also got CASA here, um, and Call It To Care. So, just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tess.
Thank you.
You wanna get it made up front, in front of the Pope? That'd be the best place.
You wanna walk down there?
Right there in the middle, right from that table. Perfect. Yeah, turn around, face toward the back.
Might have to stand in front of each other and kinda squeeze in.
The river?
Thank y'all. Thank you for everything.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Tess, I'll get a sign, a better signed copy, and on a better paper, get it signed, and I'll give it to you.
She retired. She worked at the board's office. She was over all the nurses in the school. You know, I worked there for almost eleven years.
Thank y'all, Tess. Thank you very much. Okay.
Some of those trees come out in that private, uh, Millwood State.
We had no guest speaker, did we? No, we had that. Okay. On Albany Avenue, Overpass Design Services. Uh, we discussed it. I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion. We accept the Practical Design Partnership for the engineering for the Albany Overpass.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second on the Practical Design. Okay. I suppose on, Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Steve Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. On the resolution of two thousand twenty-three dash oh-six, selection of two thousand twenty-three CDBG engineer, I hear a motion. The engineers to be accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, off motion that we accept, I believe, was statewide, and came in, uh, the highest rating and the best bid for this, uh, CDBG, uh, engineer project, so I made that motion.
Okay. I got a motion, you got a second?
I'll see.
Okay, I got a second.
Under discussion, I think it was brought out in a work session that this will be contingent upon us receiving the grant, but there'll be no pay until we got the grant, correct?
Yeah, that's, they'll have to do the preliminary engineer report, which will be part of the application that has to be sent in.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. On the resolution for two thousand twenty-three dash oh-four, accept a Georgia DOT contract for the airport perimeter fence construction.
Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution, approve the resolution of two thousand twenty-three dash seven for the contract airport perimeter fence, as you discussed.
Okay, I got a second on that.
I'll move the second, yes.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Anything left out?
Mr. Chairman, uh, as far as any discussion, do we need to include the amount that the county is gonna be obligated to pay for and what?
Well, I think we...
Or do we need to do that in the next one?
I may, I may. We cleared that in the, uh, it's in the most, I mean, in the resolution, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
That we paid that.
Okay.
Okay. If, if that's right, ain't it right here, you proved that resolution, so it's already in.
Yeah, it's already stipulated in our...
Stipulated in, okay.
Right.
All right, Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Okay, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh-eight, approve work order with Passerio Associates.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, from motion that we, uh, approve this resolution, two thousand twenty-three dash oh-eight, approve the work order for Passerio Associates.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
I move that we raise it. Uh, we're still be below the, the highest seventeen, seven dollars fifteen cent per square foot, roughly seven fifty a month, 'cause it's been five hundred a month for years and years and years. Everything else is getting raised, you know, so I move that we accept this as set forth on three seventy-eight Ozzie Davis Parkway. That's on, we need to raise that rent. And we did that in the work session, so everybody agreeable on it. I hear a motion that we raise it. I move that we raise it, uh, we're still be below the, the highest seventeen, seven dollars fifteen cent per square foot, roughly seven fifty a month, 'cause it's been five hundred a month for years and years and years. Everything else is getting raised, you know, so I move that we accept this as set forth on three seventy-eight Ozzie Davis Parkway.
Okay, I got a second.
Second.
Got a second. All right, now, any discussion on it?
Uh, for the record, that's the home healthcare business right behind this building that we're going to lease?
Yes, sir.
LHC Group Incorporated, for the record.
Do they know that we're, Mr. County Manager, they know that we're gonna be going up on the, okay?
As I understand that, they rented it to another firm or something?
No, sir, they bought, they bought the, uh, the one that was there before, and this company, this company's in Louisiana, yes, sir. They bought, they bought the previous one out.
They bought the previous renter out, so now we actually changing...
Changing name.
Name of it, and we're gonna raise the rent.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it hasn't been changed, it's been in effect for ten years.
Do they know about this? I mean, do they know they gonna have to...
Yeah, they notified us, as a matter of fact, to get it changed.
Okay.
I got one thing, did, does it spark for the insurance on the building?
Well, any maintenance and so forth, well, we, like, when the car hit it, we got our insurance money out of it, uh, but the maintenance, yeah, yes, sir, they, they maintain it.
Okay. I got a motion. You got a second?
Yeah, I made, I made the motion.
You got the motion.
I did. I brought a motion.
Executive, okay. That's all discussion on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Steve Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Now, we got a board county manager report?
Got their resolution now.
We got that resolution for the appointment of Ms. Brooks.
Yes, sir, I, I put it right there on top of your notebook.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. It's under, I added it, appointments.
Here it is, right there. Now, that's fine.
Oh, right here, okay, hold on.
On the eight, eight?
Appointment, yeah. Melinda Brooks as county clerk.
Yeah, I moved that we, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh-nine, appoint Ms. Melinda Brooks as our official county clerk.
I second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Under discussion, um, the motion should include, we're also appointing her as the
official keeper of Ware County records and the keeper of the Ware County seal.
Yes, sir.
That's part of her official, would be a part of her official duties.
Yes, sir.
She's in charge of all record keeping in Ware County and the seal.
Yeah, we have to have the state requirement that we name a records custodian.
Right.
Um, only for that reason, so, yeah, the resolution, I got it drawn up, and I've got that added, so we can just...
We're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Good, good.
Now, is Ms. Melinda still good with that? Are you still good with it? Okay.
Now, are you through with all your training?
With the segue requirement to be a clerk, I finish, but others just become serve pack, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay. All right, thank you, Melinda. All right, any more discussion?
This gives us a, a good management team with Scott and Melinda and Jennifer and Tommy Rollins, so I, I feel good about it, I think we're in good hands.
Yeah.
I do, too.
And I also thank, too, that, uh, Ms. Brooks, she's been doing a good job in, uh, addressing whatever needs we have, and also, in addition to her being a clerk and being able to assume something to do that Scott's been having to do, this would also free up his time, the way he can kinda, as they say, get out into the field more and, you know, uh, free him up from the office, and I think that's a good thing, you know?
Yeah. Also like to thank Brandon, being backup county manager, or assistant county manager, what that title was, and, uh, Mr. Gene, and, uh, Mr. Michael, uh, Brooks, 'cause, uh, I know I've called on all three of them many, many times, and all three of them always, always answered my call, or either if they were busy, they called me back within minutes. Uh, I just can't thank our Ware County employees enough for the job that they do, especially when we just had the weekend that we had, where we had to call in for mutual aid and, you know, our, our, we got a great team here, and I'm proud of the people that work for Ware County, and I'm proud of this commission. Uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm, it's a blessing to me to be a part of it, I guess is the easiest way to say it.
Get hold of it, Jim.
I agree.
All right. Anything else? Got a vote? Uh, we got a motion and a second. Now, Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Now, county manager report?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commission comment? You don't got anything?
I don't.
I hear a motion to adjourn some more.
So, Lou.
All in favor?
Aye. Looks like it takes a run.
Yeah.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. On the resolutions of 2023-04, accept a Georgia DOT contract for the airport perimeter fence construction.
Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution... Or approve the resolution 2023-7 for the contract airport perimeter fence as you discussed.
Okay. I got a second on that.
I'll move the second his.
They got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Anything left out?
Mr. Chairman, as far as any discussion, do we need to include the amount that the county's gonna be obligated to pay for and what?
Well, I think it's...
Or do we need to do that in the next one?
I may... We cleared that in the... It's in the most... I mean, in the resolution, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
That we pay that?
Okay.
Okay. If that's right, ain't that right here? You approved that resolution, so it's already in.
Yeah, it's already stipulated in the...
Stipulated in. Okay. All right. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. On the resolutions 2023-08, selection of 2023 CDBG engineer, I hear a motion. The engineers to be accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll... Off motion that we accept, I believe, was statewide. They came in the highest rating and the best bid for this CDBG engineer project, so I made that motion.
Okay. I got a motion. You got a second?
I'll see.
Okay, I got a second.
Under discussion, I think it was brought out in a work session that this will be contingent upon us receiving the grant, but there would be no payout until we got the grant correct.
Yeah, that's... They'll have to do the preliminary engineer report, which will be part of the application that has to be sent in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. On the resolutions of 2023-04, accept a Georgia DOT contract for the airport perimeter fence construction.
Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution... Or approve the resolution 2023-7 for the contract airport perimeter fence as you discussed.
Okay. I got a second on that.
I'll move the second his.
They got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? All right. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. On storage facility lease agreement, 378 Ozzie Davis Parkway. That's on... We need to raise that rent. We did that in the work session, so everybody agreeable on it. I hear a motion that we raise it.
I move that we raise it. We'll still be below the highest, $17.15 per square foot, roughly $7.50 a month, 'cause it's been $500 a month for years and years and years. Everything else is getting raised. You know, so I move that we accept this as set forth on 378 Ozzie Davis Parkway.
Okay, I got a second.
So...
Got a second. All right, now, any discussion on it?
For the record, that's the home healthcare business right behind this building that we're going to lease?
Yes, sir.
LHC Group Incorporated, for the record.
Is that...
Do they know that we're... Mr. County Manager, they know that we're gonna be going up on the... Okay.
As I understand that, they rent it to another firm or something?
No, sir. They bought... They bought the one that was there before. And this company's... This company's in Louisiana. Yes, sir. They bought the previous one out.
They bought the previous renter out, so now we actually changing...
Changing name.
Name. And we're gonna raise the rent?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it hasn't been changed. It's been in effect for 10 years.
Do they know about this? I mean, do they know they're gonna have...
Yeah, they notified us, as a matter of fact, to get it changed.
Okay.
I got one thing. They're responsible for the insurance on the building?
Well, any maintenance and so forth, well, we've... Like, when the car hit it, we got our insurance money out of it. But the maintenance, yeah, yes, sir. They maintain it.
Okay. I got a motion. You got a second?
Yeah, I made the motion.
You got the motion.
I did. I brought the motion.
Okay. That's all discussion on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Now, we got a board county manager's report.
Got that resolution now.
We got that resolution for the appointment of Ms. Brooks.
Yes, sir. I put it right there on top of your notebook. Yes, sir. It's under... I added it, appointments.
Oh, right here. Okay, hold on. On the 88?
Yeah.
I move that we... Resolution 2023-09, appoint Ms. Melinda Brooks as our official county clerk.
I second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Under discussion, the motion should include we're also appointing her as the official keeper of Weir County records and the keeper of the Weir County seal.
Yes, sir.
That's part of her official... Would be a part of her official duties.
Yes, sir.
She's in charge of all record keeping in Weir County and the seal.
Yeah, we have to have the state requirement that we name a records custodian.
Right.
Only for that reason. So, yeah, the resolution, I got it drawn up, and I've got that added, so we could just...
We're good with it?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Now, is Ms. Melinda still good with that? Are you still good with it? Okay.
Now, are you through with all your training?
With the state requirement, it's a video court, I finish, the others just become certified. That's what I wanted to know then.
Okay. All right, thank you, Melinda. All right, any more discussion?
This gives us a good management team with Scott, and Melinda, and Jennifer, and Tommy Rollins. So I feel good about it. I think we're in good hands.
Yeah.
I also think, too, that Ms. Brooks, she's been doing a good job in addressing whatever needs we have. And also, in addition to her being a clerk and being able to assume some of the duties that Scott's been having to do, this would also free up his time in a way he can kinda, as they say, get out into the field more and, you know, free him up from the office. And I think that's a good thing.
Yeah. Also, like to thank Brandon, being backup county manager or assistant county manager, what that title was, and Mr. Gene and Mr. Michael Brooks. Cause I know I've called on all three of them many, many times, and all three of them's always, always answered my call, or either they were busy, they called me back within minutes. I just can't thank our Weir County employees enough for the job that they do, especially when we just had the weekend that we had, where we had to call in for mutual aid and, you know. Our... We got a great team here, and I'm proud of the people that work for Weir County, and